Welcome. We'll go ahead and bring this meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments were sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting. Were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
Present.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you for that. This evening, we will have the invocation given by Pastor Cisiola from Calvary Christian Center. And we will remain standing for the pledge given by Mr. Bill Edict.
Father, thank you for the grace you bestowed upon this great nation, our state, California, and our local community. We do pause to ask for your help for peace in our world tonight. We thank you for the ability that we have to call on your name when we find ourselves in chaos. So we ask that your peace, your strength, and your wisdom be with our leadership as they try to settle and bring peace to all the difficulties going on across our planet. Thank you tonight that we are your servants and in turn serve the needs of the people of our community. I thank you for these who serve Yuba City as the elected city council. As they begin their deliberations tonight, may what is done here reflect your requirements for leadership, which are as stated. The Lord has told you what is good, and this is what he requires of you, to do what is right, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with your God. So I pray for the city council of Yuba City, California, in the execution of their duties, that they will act fairly, humanely, that you grant each the gift of wisdom, not from cultural trends, but from above. And in all the decisions rendered by our city council, may they always be those which make the lives of our citizens better, less burdensome, and always in the best interests of the people for the future development and expansion of new business opportunities in Yuba City, California. I pray these things in the name of your strong son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Thank you. Please be seated. And thank you for that, Pastor. Closed session. We did not have a closed session today, so closed session item was pulled from the agenda. Agenda modifications and approval of the agenda. Ceremonial presentations, item seven. The homelessness awareness month proclamation will be presented after item four, which Whereas William E. is Small Business Saturday proclamation. Burke was born November 2nd, 1923, in Roswell, New Mexico, the seventh of 11 siblings. Consent calendar, item 10. Local fire 3793 and 11. Fire management have updated attachments. And in 1941, he graduated from high school and enlisted in the Army Air Corps in November The website has been updated and hard copies have been made available to city council and to the public in the council chambers foyer. 1942, serving during World War II. We will begin this evening by a very special presentation. Thank you for your service, sir. He married his high school sweetheart, Margie, and they had four children and currently This is the 100-year birthday proclamation for past Yuba City Fire Chief William Burke. have 10 grandchildren, two of which are carrying on their tradition of firefighting. Well, I'd like to, at this point, I'd like to invite retired Yuba City Fire Department He left the Army and began his fire service career. In 1964, he became Yuba City's Fire Chief and served the Yuba City community from 1964 Chief William Burke to come forward and counsel to meet me forward, please. and retired in 1980. He had many accomplishments to mention, just a few. Assisted in implementing the fire science degree program at Yuba College. He led the effort for the design and development of the training tower at Fire Station 1, which we're all familiar with. Was instrumental in acquiring the land and building Fire Station 2, located on Gray Avenue, which opened in 1979. Chief Burke was also very involved with community organizations such as Local Red Cross, American Legion Post 705, Boy Scout Liaison, Rotary Club, and Alliance Club. Whereas, on this centennial celebration of Chief William Burke's birthday, the city of Yuba City would like to acknowledge his invaluable contributions to the city of Yuba City Fire Department and the city of Yuba City. His involvement, professionalism, and leadership were exemplary and set the stage for the life safety services provided by the Yuba City Fire Department today. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby honor and congratulate retired Fire Chief William E. Burke on his celebration of 100 years of life and his selfless contributions to the city of the Yuba City community. Let's give him a hand. Sir, is there anything you would like to say?
I guess the only thing I can think of is, thank you for bestowing this honor on me. And I could never figure out why people get a proclamation like this for doing something 105 years old. Believe what's a parade. that they love to do.
Well, thank you again, sir.
And the fire service was my love.
You want to go eat?
Thank you, Yuba City.
This is just a small token of appreciation from the city.
They're picking you up.
And we're going to get a couple of pictures of this with you real quickly.
They're picking you up.
Absolutely.
Can you guys come up? I think that's three.
He said pass the present.
Good.
He said pass the present.
Come on.
He's also the grand marshal of Veterans Day parade this year.
Oh, wow. Wow.
It really is. Okay, at this point, I would like to invite Mike Nichols, Purple Heart recipient and executive director of Yuba Center Stand Down, Brock Bowman. That's what I thought it was supposed to be. I'm sorry, Bowen. And that's American Legion. And veterans to come forward, please. So for those of you that weren't here earlier, Yuba City just received the designation as a Purple Heart City, which is pretty special. So it's a little dark out there right now, but it's bright just west of the property. Probably see it better in the daylight, but that's what that sign is about. So that's pretty special. And you know what? I really can't say enough about what the Yuba Center Stand Down does for our community. I've lived here my whole life, and last year, believe it or not, was the first time I actually participated and walked down there and saw for myself all the services that it provides. And I was absolutely blown away. So thank you for that. Veterans Day, November 11th, 2023. Whereas, it has been a long, long been accustomed to commemorate November 11th, the anniversary of the ending of World War I, by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and to, by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace. And throughout the history of our nation, our men and women in uniform have risked their lives to protect the interest of our own country and defend our freedoms. Yuba City citizens and Americans throughout the United States live in freedom because of the contributions and sacrifices made by those who have served, by those who continue to serve. Yuba City is honored to be the home of about 4,800 veterans. And whereas, on this Veterans Day, Yuba City remembers that we are forever indebted to the service members who have fought and died in defense of our country. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize November 11th, 2023, as Veterans Day, and I call this observance to the attention of all Yuba City residents. Let's give these folks a hand up here. Do I have any volunteers to say anything?
I can't put it any better than what the gentleman who's just up here that's 100 years old said. When we do something we love and we do it for some reasons of the people that we serve and the people that we love here in this community and all the communities all over the United States, we do it because we love our country and what goes on with it. So as they say, a veteran signs a ticket that never expires, and it stays that way forever. So thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that has anything to say? Like an, oh, nope, okay. All right.
I'm big mouth anyway. I'm Ray Bull, and I'm the commander of Marysville VFW Post 948. And we'll be in a trailer in the parade Saturday, but I'd like to call recognition to one individual up here, Brock Bowen, who's instrumental in getting Yuba City a Purple Heart City in a trail. He was instrumental in getting it in Marysville. He put a lot of work into it, especially in Marysville, because he had everything done, and the COVID shut it down. Legislature left, but he got it done. A lot of kudos. With that, everybody have a good Veterans Day.
Okay. At this point, I would like to invite Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204 leadership and members to come forward, please. So in case you didn't know, Yuba City is home to just a marvelous organization called the Moose Lodge, 1204, which is in District 4. I like to say that. Which I can, it constantly amazes me, the service that this organization brings to our community and adds to what I consider quality of life. And so thank you for that. So here we go. Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204, 75th anniversary. Whereas, the city of Yuba City would like to celebrate and recognize Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204 on its 75th anniversary. And the Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204, currently located at 1205 South Walton Avenue. The Yuba City Moose Lodge is the embodiment of community. Its motto is "An International Organization of Men and Women Dedicated to Caring for Young and Old, Bringing Communities Closer Together, and Celebrating Life." Boy, that's what you guys do. Moose Lodge has many charities they donate to, including, but not limited to, Say Love, the Diabetes Association, Relay for Life, Casa de Esbranza, and so many more. Congratulations to the Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204 on celebrating 75 years in the Yuba City community, and we are all grateful for the generous contribution to the quality of life we all enjoy. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize the Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204 and celebrate their 75th anniversary. Let's give them a hand. So who gets the honor?
My name is Bill Edict. I'm the vice president of our Moose Lodge. I brought a couple of extra people with me here. This is Joanne King. Joanne King has been a member of our lodge for over 50 years, and I would say she's one of the keys of our success. We have Barbara Green. I'm getting old. Barbara's also been there for over 50 years, and these are the, 55, I'm sorry. But these are the keys to our lodge's success, because these two never quit. They just keep on going. And again, I won't let them say something here in a minute, but I wanted to introduce John Huff. John Huff is our treasurer and very instrumental in our lodge also. Joanne, you got something you want to say?
I just feel so humble that we were after all these heroes that were up here first. But anyway, we enjoy helping our community and people in need. But the Moose Lodge does have the children at Mooseheart and the elderly at Moosehaven, and that's who our main goal is, to make a life better for them. But then we also do the same for our community. And we come a long way from starting out in a barrack building on Woodbridge Avenue. So, and the flood destroyed it, so, and then now we're here today.
Okay.
We also brought something here for our city council members to remember us by. This is our 75th year, they call them challenge coins, and we wanted to give each one of our city council members that, so to have them think about us and maybe encourage them to come join us every now and then. We'd appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Get back. Okay, so Monday night spaghetti night, Tuesdays, Tuesdays, come on, come on. Wednesday, help me out. Save. Thursday.
First Wednesday's chicken, fried chicken.
Okay.
And you always gotta stay in here.
Okay.
Well, thank you once again.
Okay, at this point, I would like to invite Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204 leadership and members to come forward, please. So in case you didn't know, Yuba City is home to just a marvelous organization called the Moose Lodge, 1204, which is in District 4. I like to say that. Which I can, it constantly amazes me, the service that this organization brings to our community and adds to what I consider quality of life. And so thank you for that. So here we go. Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204, 75th anniversary. Whereas, the city of Yuba City would like to celebrate and recognize Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204 on its 75th anniversary. And the Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204, currently located at 1205 South Walton Avenue. The Yuba City Moose Lodge is the embodiment of community. Its motto is "An international organization of men and women dedicated to caring for young and old, bringing communities closer together, and celebrating life." Boy, that's what you guys do. Moose Lodge has many charities they donate to, including, but not limited to, Say Love, the Diabetes Association, Relay for Life, Casa de Esbranza, and so many more. Congratulations to the Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204 on celebrating 75 years in the Yuba City community, and we are all grateful for the generous contribution to the quality of life we all enjoy. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize the Yuba City Moose Lodge number 1204 and celebrate their 75th anniversary. Let's give them a hand. So who gets the honor?
My name is Bill Edict. I'm the vice president of our Moose Lodge. I brought a couple of extra people with me here. This is Joanne King. Joanne King has been a member of our lodge for over 50 years, and I would say she's one of the keys of our success. We have Barbara Green. I'm getting old. Barbara's also been there for over 50 years, and these are the, 55, I'm sorry. But these are the keys to our lodge's success, because these two never quit. They just keep on going. And again, I won't let them say something here in a minute, but I wanted to introduce John Huff. John Huff is our treasurer and very instrumental in our lodge also. Joanne, you got something you want to say?
I just feel so humble that we were after all these heroes that were up here first. But anyway, we enjoy helping our community and people in need. But the Moose Lodge does have the children at Mooseheart and the elderly at Moosehaven, and that's who our main goal is, to make a life better for them. But then we also do the same for our community. And we come a long way from starting out in a barrack building on Woodbridge Avenue. So, and the flood destroyed it, so, and then now we're here today.
Okay.
We also brought something here for our city council members to remember us by. This is our 75th year, they call them challenge coins, and we wanted to give each one of our city council members that, so to have them think about us and maybe encourage them to come join us every now and then. We'd appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Get back. Okay, so Monday night spaghetti night, Tuesdays, Tuesdays, come on, come on. Wednesday, help me out. Save. Thursday.
The first Wednesday's chicken, fried chicken.
Okay.
And you always gotta stay in here.
Okay.
The next one is roast beef, and it's either roasted, or pre-cooked roast beef, or fried side. The next food is, I want to say, meat. But you always gotta stay in here.
Okay.
Well, whatever kind of quarters, the practice on supper.
Okay. Well, thank you once again. Okay, at this point, we are, I'd like to invite business owners Tiffany Harryford, Creative Interiors, and Kevin Dehoff, which is Kay Roberts, to come forward, please. Well, I didn't realize the whole year had gone by yet. Okay, it looks like we're coming up on Small Business Saturday again. That year went by fast. November 25th, 2023, that's around the corner. All right, whereas locally owned businesses contribute to our unique and vibrant community character, boy, that's the truth, and small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together, creating jobs, boosting the local economy, and preserving our neighborhoods. Customers who shop on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. 67 cents out of every dollar spent goes back into the local community. We are grateful to the small locally owned businesses of Yuba City for their generous contributions to the quality of life we all enjoy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize November 7th, 2023, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the citizens of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Let's give them a hand, please. Okay, you ready for this? Okay.
Well, I do appreciate the recognition from the city council and city of Yuba City. Kay Roberts is at the end of Pluma Street, I guess, and we'll be celebrating our 10th year anniversary this month. A lot of great businesses downtown. My friend Tiffany's mine, but there is, and I think just the whole community down there. I just have the atmosphere of our downtown going forward.
Yes, the atmosphere is great. Like Kevin said, we've been in business, gosh, going on 30 years? I think we're close. But in our current location on Plumas, it's, we're never moving again. And I also have my right-hand lady here with me, also Becky Foster, so I couldn't do the business without my great help that I have. But also, we could not do our business without our, our gals always say we have the best customers, and people are very appreciative, and we appreciate hearing that. So it's great being downtown and with the council support, everybody, the community supports us. We could not do it without that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And you know, it was, yeah, let's, go ahead, yeah. About a month ago, I was down there, and it was just amazing, everything that was going on during the evening. I happened to be going to watch a band at Sopatay across the street at the Tea Garden House. They had a concert going on, some kind of a band.
Battle of the Bands.
Battle of the Bands, so you had that going on. Then right down the street, you had a play going on at the theater, and it was just amazing. Look at all this activity in our downtown district. And the other day, councilmember Boomgarden, we were playing Crossing Guard. Thank you for all the, and I was amazed by all the trick or treaters that went down. Wasn't it incredible? And so it was, our downtown is really special, so thank you.
Mayor, will you indulge me for a moment? I want to point out, this gentleman is third generation flower business in our community. His grandmother started, is Blanche Fabula, is that correct? Neat lady. I worked for her years ago as a punk kid, and. No, that's payroll. And this young lady is the second generation business owner in our community, so keep up. Are we going to go for a third?
Well, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I would like to invite Johnny Burke, Mr. Johnny Burke, Executive Director of the Center Yuba Homeless Consortium, to come forward, please. So I've got to say a few words about this young man right here. Those of you that know Johnny, know that he is, he's got a servant's heart, he really does. I've had the privilege of knowing him for the short time I've been on council, but I'm, it never fails to amaze me how much work that you put into your job and how seriously you take it and the quality of work you get done. So thank you for that. And we are here to talk about Homelessness Awareness Month, which is November 2023. Whereas homelessness is a challenge in Yuba City impacting the lives and individuals, of individuals and families, many of whom come from our own neighborhoods. And Yuba City partners with numerous public and private agencies to develop solutions to homelessness. Programs such as Yuba City Police Department's Homeless Liaison Officers, Better Way, Hands of Hope, and the Coordinated Entry System have been achieving success. The people of Yuba City recognize that homelessness continues to be a serious problem for hundreds of individuals and families in the region and that we, as a community, cannot stand idly by as long as this struggle continues. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the City of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, hereby joins in recognition of Homelessness Awareness Month and encourages all citizens to be aware that many people do not have housing and need support from residents as well as private and public service entities. At this point, is there anything you'd like to say? Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor. So thankful to the City of Yuba City for supporting efforts to assist our residents that are unhoused in our area. City of Yuba City every year contributes funds through their Community Development Block Grants. They have two wonderful homeless liaison officers who are out on the streets every single day, engaging with people to help to move them from homelessness to house. Their goal is not to put them behind bars, but to get them into safe and stable housing. Just really appreciate the partnerships, especially your city staff, which is constantly in meetings every week with Sutter County, with Yuba County, with Marysville. It's quite a collaborative effort. And so I'm very thankful to this council and they're very thankful to the city for all their efforts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And we've got something to give to you, is that okay? Okay. And Mr. Burke is gonna have a presentation for us a little bit earlier. Okay, so thank you, sir. All right, at this point, it looks like we have a, Yuba Center, Yuba Center Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, Janelle Willis? Is that right?
Willis.
I'm sorry. I'd like to invite Janelle Willis, Yuba City Chamber of Commerce, new executive director, to present. And welcome.
Thank you. She had asked me to come introduce myself and I'm week five, so I was like, no, I'm not presenting anything. So I'm in total overload to just know the chamber is a lot. But what you saw here today is every person that we fight for in our town. I have Kevin and I have Tiffany and of course, our staff, which I, Becky's amazing, let's just be honest. That's why we did this. My husband and I have had seven businesses throughout our course here in Yuba City, and I am a honker, so let's just, let's just notice that. And so is he, so I've never told so many people I'm a honker in my life. But we just opened another, another business recently, just in this last year. And it just shows me what we can do in a town like this. I love it here, I promote it. If you know anything about me, I'm quite a bit of a maniac and I came into the chamber like a ball of fire. I do have my A-Team here, I have Celeste and Jackie, they're both shaking their head. I'm a post-it note girl, so get ready, there will be some things that we're gonna change. It's year 2024 and we want to help our businesses, so look out. That's what we're gonna do around there. If you're not a member of the chamber, reach out to us, there's many things we can do, even if you're, you know, my agents are in the room here, I love them too. So we can do things for them. I look forward to working with the city and all the jurisdictions that I'm a part of, and I'm excited, so be scared. It's just a fair statement, because you guys know me. So any questions for me?
Any questions from council?
I'll be good. Just welcome. And we really do look at a partnership with the chamber and are excited to see you as its new director.
Thank you, I look forward to it.
I'll just echo what Mark said, welcome on board. I am constantly amazed by the energy that comes out of that two-story building over there on Franklin and 99 and just the, the impact it has on our community. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you, I am honored to be in that house, but if you hear me call it the Chicken House, don't get mad. Thank you, gentlemen.
We're still working on that, thank you. All right. Number six, local, new local homeless action plan and point of time count presentation. I'd like to invite Johnny Burke, once again, Executive Director, Center Yuba Homeless Consortium, to present. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to come and present today. I know the time is short, so I will get right to it. The presentation should have been sent to all of you and there's some additional information that I'll be just glancing right by, just a little bit of information about the consortium itself. And this information is available for anybody watching at home. You can always reach us, my contact information will be at the end of the slide. But just a brief thing about the homeless consortium, what we do, we primarily handle federal and state funds that come to our area and distribute them out to agencies doing the work at the client-based level. We also oversee the coordinated entry system and we do all the referral-based, for anyone coming to the system that is getting a reference to a shelter or housing, they would go through our system. We manage all the homeless management information system as well as report all the numbers to both HUD and the State of California. And then collaboration locally is one of the key things that we do. The coordinated entry system, for those who do not know, and I know the council members are very familiar with it, but in Yuba City, Hands of Hope located on Spiva Avenue is where you would want to direct anyone who you know that is experiencing homelessness or at risk of becoming homeless. The very simple answer is go to Hands of Hope, walk in there, present yourself, they'll do an intake and they'll start to evaluate the needs and find out what and where and what you're gonna need to start to move from homelessness to house. And they will begin the referral-based system from that. So that's a slide of just a, just not even probably three-quarters of our partners that work with us. You'll see the City of Yuba City's logo on there as they're, as a proud partner of the consortium and helping us to work to get every resident into safe and stable housing. Wanted to go over, just talk about the point in time count. That's something that's very significant that we do every two years in our area. The point in time count is something that HUD, which is Housing and Urban Development, has mandated for many years. It's a snapshot into how many homeless are in an individual area at one point during the year. So we did our count at the last week of January this year. And the way that the point in time count goes is we try and go out and count every single person who's experiencing homelessness in our area. And so we do that with a huge amount of volunteers. And this year, we had over 100 volunteers, we had our most comprehensive pit count ever. We did not just go out on one day, we elected to go out on several days and then do some phone-based surveys, which is something HUD allows. So through the course of that, of going out in the City of Yuba City one day, and City of Marysville on the same day, then we went on unincorporated Sutter County on another day and unincorporated Yuba County on another day. And then we began calling everyone that we had in our system to find out if they were still homeless and if they'd been counted and done the survey yet. So we feel like our presentation and our, our survey this year was as good as it's ever been before. And the results of that are on the screen there. The total number of people that we found that were experiencing homelessness in our area were 963, including 418 in Sutter County. And I know there are many questions, well, how about Yuba City? Well, we'll get to that in just a moment. But HUD really doesn't care about cities, they only care about counties. So everything's structured around counties, but we did add a couple of questions in to find out about some city information. In addition, I want to point out that in the, going out and meeting with folks on the street, dealing with different agencies that were servicing folks, we came across another 252 precariously housed people. So those are folks that you and I would probably consider to be homeless. Unfortunately, HUD does not, because that means that they were in some sort of safe situation during the count. Now, safe situation might have been something we call couch surfing. They might have been in a motel paid for by themselves. They could have been what's called doubled up, where you maybe have three families in one apartment, something like that. But unfortunately, if there's a stable roof over their head, HUD does not consider them homeless. So that is not the total number of precariously housed folks in our area. There's almost no way to count that, because they do have some sort of, some sort of structure that they, they live in and some sort of safe place to call home. And so it's hard to find all those people. But we always add that number and just to let people know that at a bare minimum, on one day in our area, there was almost 1,250 people that were homeless and guaranteed that we didn't catch them all. And so wanted to show the point in time comparison over the last three times we counted, because we do this every other year. There's some significant differences between 2019, 2021, and 2023, and it's important to understand that. The best comparison that we should look at is 2019 to 2023. And the reason is, is that in 2021, we were in the midst of a COVID surge and that year HUD, no one was going out. There was no one who's gonna be, you couldn't put multiple people in a car to go out to different areas to do surveys, you couldn't do anything. We didn't have volunteers, because everybody was too busy with everything else COVID-related. So for that particular year, HUD allowed us to do what they called an alternative data set exemption. In other words, instead of going out and counting people and doing a survey, they allowed us to offer up the information that was in our homeless management information system of current clients. And so it looked like we had a huge jump from 2019 to 2021. And the reality is that these are folks that we were seeing every day that are engaged in services. I'm not a big pit count fan, because you can't catch everybody in one day, it's a snapshot. It's almost like as if I asked everybody in here, how many people shop in Walmart? Everyone's gonna raise their hand. But if I was to go to Walmart for one day and say, how many people shopped that day? You only get a snapshot. And we do our best to try and comprehensively count everybody we possibly can, but the reality is you don't get them all. So I was pretty happy in 2021 that we were able to use that information and show a more accurate count of current. But and they only allowed that exemption for one time. In 2023, we had to go back to counting on the streets. So it looks like we had a huge increase in 2021 and then dropped down in 2023. The reality is if you compare 2019 to 2023 numbers, you'll see that there's been a steady increase over that time, both in Sutter and Yuba Counties. There is some stats in that slideshow and you also received a paper copy of the point in time report, should have been on each one of your desks there, also sent to you electronically, so you can look at the numbers of sheltered versus unsheltered. We still have a major issue with unsheltered homelessness in our area. As many shelters as we have, we certainly don't have enough beds to meet the need. And so you can see the numbers are quite larger for unsheltered versus sheltered. And then age, this is something that's gonna be very interesting over the next several decades truly to look at. Our homeless population is getting older and that's a terrible thing. Not that we want young people to experience homelessness, but the last thing we want is for our senior citizens to be experiencing homelessness in their age after being in our community for so long. And so that is something that is a statewide trend and even a nationwide trend. We're hoping to reverse that in our area. But the truth is that the boomer generation is becoming our fastest-growing homeless number in our area, on both sides of the river. This is an information chart that really no other continuum of care has. This year, we decided to ask the question, what city did you become homeless in? And what city do you call home? The whole idea behind this is we want to know where people are. You know, where did you become homeless? Because oftentimes, I have people tell me all the time, they believe people are coming to our area for homeless services, because we have excellent services in our area. The reality is that, that they're not coming here for the services. The folks that are homeless in our area are our neighbors, our brothers and sisters that have become homeless while here. And so this chart is great to look at and, and I gotta give Troy Koski credit, I wish he was here tonight, because we asked him not too long ago, hey, how many folks do you think are homeless in Yuba City? And he said, I think it's right around 200, maybe 220. And the number that we counted, if you look on the chart there for Yuba City, for the number of people that say they became homeless in Yuba City was 214. So he was right, right on the mark there. The number of people that are homeless that call Yuba City their home, is Troy here? Hey, I didn't see you there. What's up, Kosk? 248. And so it shows that we have a lot of folks in our area that are homeless. Ben Mooney had pointed out that our chart, not everyone answered this question. We had 963 folks that we counted that were homeless total for both counties. And yet this, when you look, there's only about 600 that are on here that answered this question. We went back through and we have the numbers of people who did not answer the question that left it blank. After taking those numbers out, what it works out to is about 15% of the population that, that is here are from out of the area, that became homeless in this area. And then for those that call this area home, it's only 8.7% that were from outside the area, for the folks that answered the question. So just always highlighting the fact that our homeless issue is our local residents. It's not folks coming into out of the area. And that's important to understand when we're, we're addressing. So you can see on there, Sutter County, very dominated by Yuba City, that's not surprising. It is the anchor city for Yuba City. There's really only two other cities that could be named with being Sutter and Livock. There is a possibility that folks could be just outside Yuba City and consider themselves to be in Yuba City when they're actually in unincorporated Sutter County. But clearly, Sutter County and Yuba City, very tied together for addressing homelessness. So wanted to give you those numbers, those are important for when city staff is looking for grants and trying to figure out where to plot strategic planning and all the things that, that City of Yuba City does and also Sutter County as well. Very briefly, because I only have a couple of minutes left, we just completed our local homeless action plan at the beginning of this year. This was something that the State of California asked us to do as part of receiving a funding source called H-HAP Round 3. And in the course of having our consultants go through, do many surveys, which many of the council members were a part of and answered questions, these were the major system gaps that they found, which are things that we know, that are not very surprising. First one, and number one, is affordable housing. Until there's more affordable housing, we are always gonna have a homelessness issue. Homeless prevention became a gap that we have realized that is becoming more and more critical in our area. I always like to tell people, if you look at homelessness on a continuum, there's gotta be an entry point and an exit point. The entry point is the door that we would so desperately love to shut and to keep people in housing and not becoming homeless. The exit point would be the folks that are, that have become homeless into housing. And so homeless prevention is a door that right now we're having trouble shutting. We constantly have people coming into homelessness every single month. At Hands of Hope's two locations, the one in Spiva here in Yuba City and then Life Building Center in Marysville. There is never a week where they do less than approximately 30 new intakes on people who have just become homeless. And some weeks, that number exceeds 60, week after week, without fail. And so we constantly have people coming in, so that was a gap that, that we knew about, but that's highlighted. In-term shelter, I showed you the numbers of unsheltered population, we don't have enough beds for the folks. For if every person wanted to stay in a shelter bed, we don't have enough beds, so we definitely need more shelter. Physical mental health services, this is something where it continues to be a growing problem. We're very hopeful that, that in the near future, at Venice Right Out, we'll be able to set off with the Project Hope, which has already been approved by the council, because we have a real issue with folks that are on the streets that really need to have some sort of physical healthcare needs. Lots of time, people will go in for surgery and then they're released out in the street, they haven't had time to recover. Oftentimes, they may be too sick for the street, but not sick enough for the hospital. And so we're hoping that Project Hope will help that. And mental health services is a huge issue in the homeless services field that we continue to see that we need some more services. And the last thing is community engagement. And this is something that in our previous action plan, we did not really address, but getting the, the public more involved and getting more folks with lived experience and to help us with decision-making. So with all of that, the four goals for addressing homelessness on the plan, homelessness prevention, I just mentioned that a moment ago, that's one of our key things. Shelter and housing support, if we can add additional numbers of beds for shelter as well as additional affordable housing, we'll be doing great. Homeless and community partnerships, we need to engage more with the community, local community-led action, and also get more involvement from folks with lived experience. And the last thing is health services expansion, which is to get more mobile engagement. Sutter Yuba Haverell's Heart Team and their iCare team have done amazing work, along with the Venice Right Out Street Nurse Team, of getting folks connected to services where they did not want to come into coordinated entry before, and now they're starting to get connected and move into housing. So that is a super, super brief summary of everything we do. I'm two minutes over, I recognize that. I did my best, I spoke as fast as the guy in the little, the little, what was those, Micro Machines commercials years ago, so. But I'd like to stop and if there's any, any questions with the time here, I would certainly love to field them now.
Through the mayor, thank you so much for, first, for what you do, trying to coalesce all these different agencies together to try to deal with this, you know, issue that's impacting folks. And I really appreciate the comments in regards to our senior citizens. I'm in the boomer area, so you know, for us, I think it's knowing that those that are precariously housed right now, if we can keep them in a house somehow or another and keep them off the street, it's a lot better, a lot easier. keep them off the street, it's a lot better, a lot easier than having to try to recover them from the street. One of the, the things in your report I found interesting, I know Councilman or Vice Mayor Harris and I both participated in the pit count, was actually asking the question about where, where these folks considered home? Where were they from? And there's always the, the discussion, and I, you know, Troy's here too, you know, that, that somehow or another, you know, we're, we're a destination for others outside of our community. The area that I was working was around Pluma Street. Every one of those folks was local. They weren't coming from someplace else. They were our residents who had, you know, a knuckleball or a curve ball thrown at them and now we're, we're out trying to figure out how to make it out on the street. I, I think that, that, you know, this notion that they come bust in, and I know Troy and I've had that conversation, you know, and maybe you want to talk about it tonight, is that I, I don't see that happening. And maybe, maybe things have changed over the last few months, but there is a, there is a perception that, that, you know, these buses come in and, and unload folks here. And maybe you want to address that real quick? And I have one follow-up after that.
Sure. I would just say that in my experience, there haven't been any, any continuing things like that. Maybe a year ago, we had a random bus show up from an area that no one could track down that dropped off some folks. We have individuals, I just got a call from a, a local shelter that had a, a mental hospital down in the Bay Area, put somebody in an Uber and just sent them here and said, hey, go to the Twin Cities Rescue Mission, just show up here, they'll house you. And that was very unusual. But those things do happen on ones and twos on occasion. Whenever I do hear about them, I love to make calls to folks to let them know that, hey, we certainly don't dump our residents on you. We'd appreciate it if you don't do it to us, but we don't have any consistent things. Nothing like what you hear about with like the border disputes down south sending people up there. I got a call not too long ago about, hey, there's a whole bunch of busloads of people. Absolutely there was. And they are migrant workers with a work program and they're going back and they were not homeless at all. They were in a hotel. And so sometimes people see buses or see some things that they think are happening that aren't. But occasionally we've had some folks get dropped off. And Troy, you might, might speak to that.
So the last month or so, I can say that we have had some people that have come into town, but I think that's because of further crossroads. If you're either going north or south or east or west, in California, it seems like you're coming through more close to Yuba City. So some of those people do get stuck, but it's the same thing. We're not seeing them come here specifically for Yuba City. They stay here for a little while and they'll move on.
What we do see is that when folks come from out of the area, it's typically a familial tie. So for instance, the church that I'm a part of, we have a woman come to our church right now and she just explained to me the other day that she came to our area just a few months ago and she stayed Life Building Center. She was part of one of the county HSP programs and now she's gone house. And I said, oh, you came here? And I said, why'd you come here? She said, well, my daughter's here and I wanted to be close to my grandkids. So she literally came here and was on the streets just to be close to her family. And that's not an uncommon story from folks coming out of the area, so.
Thanks, thanks for that. I think that, you know, I think as a city council and certainly myself, I'll speak for myself, is, you know, engaging with us often and early on solutions, I think, is a really good practice. There's a lot of stuff that we have been doing, which is great, and I think there's some things on the horizon. You know, just one, one city council person saying is get with us off early and often. We want to help. And I know you do and you want to help as well. It's just sometimes it gets a little awkward when things come up and, and it's like, whoa, where'd that come from? And I'm looking forward to continuing to enhance the relationships with folks like yourself and the other many organizations that are trying to deal with homelessness. Thanks.
I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. I should just give a shout out to both the Vice Mayor, Bloom Garden, and Councilmember Sean Harris. They were very instrumental in working with Habitat for Humanity for the Merrimitt Village Project that will be going forward in the next several years in a phased project. And we're really there to support it because of the, understanding the need for affordable housing, market rate housing, all the different housing needs of Yuba City. You guys were excellent on that committee. Appreciate that so much.
Well, we appreciate you too, Johnny. So it's a lot of work and it's a very, very difficult problem to, to address, but you're, I'm confident you're doing the very best with, with your team and collaboration with both sides of the river and Troy over here. And it's, I would, I would just encourage folks, we can, everyone can look at numbers and this stuff, which is great, but I think a good opportunity would be when you call for volunteers for, for that point in time count. We, we did it, but we kind of were already a little bit familiar with, with the conditions that folks are being in. And by the way, I think Troy and I literally, I saw Troy pull somebody out of a cave, what was it, pipe actually? And things like that, where these folks are, are neighbors and they're living in those conditions, and we really need to do, continue the work that you're doing and be a part, an active part in coming to, I don't know if we can come up with an answer or a solution, but we can definitely try to manage it and mitigate. I look in these numbers here, first thing I go to is the families with, with children and that's just heartbreaking. So clearly we have a lot of work more to do, but I'm, I'm very proud of the work that we are doing and you are leading and, and folks are making a difference out there. Whether, you know, we get calls from people who don't understand that and we try to educate them that these, this is not, they're, they're calling and the attitude is they're complaining about a litter problem. Where the complaint is because they, how dare they have to see someone that's homeless walking down the sidewalk? And that's sad and heartbreaking, but you know what, we're doing the best we can and I know, it's just, it's just a really tough thing. You layer on all these layers of PTSD and veterans and, and domestic violence and everything, everything, everything. And it's very tough to manage, but thank you very much for what you do and hopefully we can take these numbers. I would be curious, I don't know if, like you had mentioned, the, the, the numbers, I think were probably higher.
Yeah.
But I don't know if, have there been any effort or isn't even possible to maybe come up with somewhat of a margin of error statistically in all the number of people?
Most people conservatively peg 20 to 25% under count. I will tell you that we run a, a weekly report of active clients in our system over a 90-day period. And that number is almost double what this one point in time count. There is over 1,800 people in our system right now. Now, having said that, we, we prompt agencies to do data cleanup and things like that. So if we were to do a, a real concentrated count, we probably could get that number down to 1,650, 1,700. But the reality is that there's well over 1,000 and almost 2,000 folks that are, that are engaging in services over a 90-day window. So that's the thing about point in time count, it's just this snapshot, but doesn't really include everybody who comes in because someone might be homeless on one day and not the next or vice versa in the case may be, so.
I think there's probably even potential for some folks who are, you know, anything governmental, they shy away from. And so they're not going to be even in your system. They're doing their own thing on their own, in their own way too.
Yeah, and absolutely. And I will say that our, our volunteers, both you gentlemen included, did an excellent job. Of the 963 people we counted, there's an option to do what's called an observation count, which is quite literally if someone doesn't want to talk to you, you just try and describe what that person is, give them the count. Of the almost 1,000 people we counted, plus the other 250-ish precariously housed, we had less than 40 and it was closer to like 25 observations. So folks engaged and these questions are, you know, they're, some of them are very personal. They're saying like, you know, do you have HIV/AIDS? Do you have a, a drug problem? Do you have an alcohol issue? Things like that. And folks, our volunteers just came up and just showed love to people and said, hey, we want to help you out, bring more resources to the area, we'll give us some information. And here's a bag with a, a set of socks in it and that was good to go. So it was a great job.
That was our experience too, is that we didn't have one person tell us that they wouldn't participate, which was nice. I'll stop, but thank you very much.
Through the mayor. The one thing I, the, my optic on this is that you have to resolve these people's issues before we can get over the hump of getting them moved forward. And I've always asked the question with all the efforts that we use and all the resources we're using, how many success stories are we getting? You never throw those numbers up. How many that are actually gone back to work, making their own way in our society, contributing? And I'd be really interested in seeing those things because the more money you just keep throwing thrown, until you resolve issues, we're just in a cycle. We're, we're in a wheel with a, with a treadmill. And that's what I'm most concerned about.
I appreciate your comments, Councilmember Pasqual. And I would love to, like I said, I mentioned earlier, I'd love to sit down and have lunch with you and really go on these. One of the challenges is that when folks are successful and they've been housed or they've gone on, a lot of times we don't hear from them again, which is a great thing. And so it's very difficult to track individuals, especially when you're talking about over 1,000 people in the bi-county area at any given moment, it's quite a bit higher than that. So we track individual success stories. And if you follow our Facebook page this month, we're trying to highlight those and put those up and you'll be seeing more of those come out. As far as addressing folks' issues, you have a very strong point. And there's many folks that, that we deal with, residents that are dealing with either mental health issues or substance use disorder issues. Most of the funding sources that we get that come from the state of California or federal are based around a concept of housing first, which is rather than address the issue first, it's put people in housing and then address the issues. There's research that goes to show, and there's, there's agreements and disagreements on both sides on this, but there's, there's research that's shown that if you get folks a stable place to stay, then they can begin to address their issues. Unfortunately, sometimes housing first goes a little far and doesn't want you to address those issues at all because they, they allow too much free choice in there and stuff. And so someone might get housed and still have a substance use issue they don't want to address. And frankly, as well as you might be able to help them, they might spiral down and become homeless again. So we really need to have kind of a, a two-pronged approach in, in housing them and addressing issues. California makes it difficult. Everything has to be choice. It used to be, you would get different court programs that would mandate that you went to drug counseling and you just don't see those much anymore. And so I think, I think things are going to swing back in the way a little bit. We'll be able to address some things a little bit more, but that's not the majority of our, the population who live there, it is a significant amount. And so I, I agree with you. That's why at coordinated entry, there's lots of things offered every week for folks to be able to build their base. In addition to shelter and housing, there's classes for anger management. There's classes on, there's 12-step classes there. There is, the one stops come in. All the work that we do is really all these other agencies doing the work. It's a big continuum. That's why I saw those folks there. And so all those classes are offered. We're finding out that housing by itself is awesome, but permanent supportive housing is really key. There's folks that have been homeless for a decade and when you are able to house them, they quite simply don't know how to live inside again or do the normal things. And so they need someone checking in with them to make sure that they're doing everything they need to do, that they're keeping their residence clean, that so they don't have bugs, that they're doing their laundry, that they're engaging in whatever positive activities. And so there's constantly research going in to find out the better and better ways to do things and some things are tried and failed. And so I think you're going to see a little bit of a shift back. There's a lot more emphasis on mental health right now. The challenge is that it's so hard to find psychiatrists and a lot of folks need medication to accompany them on their journey, that it's, it's, it's a real challenge and stuff. But, but I agree with you. Let's get to it for lunch and talk about it some more.
Thank you. It's my turn.
Yes, sir. Mayor.
Thank you for that presentation, Johnny. I did have the benefit of, of sitting through this presentation last week at GAC.
Yeah.
So thank you for that. But not all of, not all of us did. And just to give a, a quick background on roundabout way of asking this question, I attended League of Cities about a month ago with Councilmember, excuse me, Vice Mayor Harris. One of the breakout sessions dealt with homelessness and how, how to do, how to make really meaningful change and what the first step was. And one of the items that came up was for the governing entity to declare a health and safety emergency. And you and I, that's come up a discussion at least once in my circle. And you and I spoke about that. Can you discuss where we are with that, at least with the county and what that brings to our community?
So what I can share with you is what I know at the moment. So right after that meeting and the GAC meeting that the mayor's referring to is the Chamber of Commerce's Government Affairs Committee. I did a presentation last week. I, I went back and I sent an email to both CAOs of Yuba and Sutter County to confirm what the emergency declaration was and if it was still in effect and if it has any expiration. I haven't heard back from either one of them yet, so I'll probably ping them tomorrow to see if they, they're probably searching for it because both declarations, to my knowledge, were signed right around 2015, 2016. That's what allowed the birth of 14 Ford over in Yuba County and then not too long after, Better Way in Sutter County. Both those projects normally you wouldn't be able to do frankly, because they're tough sheds that don't have running water. And typically you can't house people in those situations unless you have an emergency declaration, emergency homeless declaration in your area that says, we need to do something right now to help people out and protect them from the elements to a certain degree. So to my understanding, in both counties, which would include all the core cities, that declaration is in effect still because if it wasn't, we wouldn't be able to have those two shelters open right now. So, but I haven't heard back to give you the exact, but it was, I emailed it right when I got back to the office.
Thank you for your presentation, Johnny. Thank you.
All right. Appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Okay. Public communication. Appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We have a couple, a couple of speaker cards. The first one is from Vicki Stevenson. So there should be a button up there.
I don't like this. Thank you and have a good evening and appreciate all the help today. Vicki Stevenson, I've been a resident over Yuba City for over 1970. Worked for Sutter County for 35 years, tax collector's department, now volunteer for the Sutter County Sheriff's Department and retired and widowed. The last four months, I have been attacked by dogs, owners' dogs. I have a five-year-old boxer who I walk every day, morning and night, around my home area. My yard is completely fenced, front and back. However, the dog that first attacked me about three months ago was a German shepherd who scaled an eight-foot fence right on Butte House Road. A friend of mine happened to be going down Butte House Road and stopped and assisted me and I didn't get hurt at that time. And then about a month and a half later, I was gone out of town and my pet sitter was walking my dog and the house right next door to the owner of the German shepherd had a rotting, that attacked her. There were no injuries at that time, however, we had someone stop and assist on that. October 31st, 3rd, excuse me, I was walking my boxer Cassie in the evening and I started carrying mace because I was told that would deter the dogs. And I turned on Hooper Road and this gentleman who was living out of his truck had two pit bulls. And they attacked me and my dog and I was hurt and so was my dog. The police department was called, animal control was called, ambulance was called. But my problem is I have reported all three incidents and the gentleman with the pit bulls, his dog was not licensed or vaccinated. My dog is licensed and vaccinated, but I had to quarantine her for 10 days. And I cannot get any results out of the county on what my options are to recoup medical bills and the frustration of people not keeping their animals behind fence yards or on a leash. And I have several neighbors that would love to walk their dog, but now in my particular neighborhood, they will not walk their dog because they're afraid of being attacked. And I understand, being a former county employee, that the animal shelter is opt by the city now, but the county has the employees. And I can't seem to get any answers at what my options are to recoup my medical bills and vet bills, and yet my dog is licensed and vaccinated and behind the fence. And I'm just, I'm here to ask for maybe someone to look into it and give me some advice on it.
So, city manager, is there someone here that can have a conversation with Ms. Stevenson?
We do. So Anne Gillan, who's the director, is right to, behind you, sitting behind you. She can follow up to get your information. She's, she's right, sitting right there. She can follow up with you to get your information. She oversees Sutter Animal Services Authority, and so she can provide some info. And unfortunately, dog attacks on people happens more than what we would like to see in this community.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you. And as someone who uses his bicycle from time to time in the city, I know what it's like, and it's scary.
It is.
It's absolutely scary. And so we hear you, and that's your, that's going to be your contact, contact expert right there, content expert. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
We appreciate you for speaking this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have a second speaker card from, is it Suk?
Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for your time. Coming for you today just to get some direction on how to get this issue resolved. My name is Suk Singera. I'm a real estate agent. The issue we have is solar panels encroaching onto the neighboring property. The property is a duplex owned by two different owners. There's a lot of those here in Yuba City. The property at question is 675 Downey Street in Yuba City. I was the real estate agent for the neighboring property, 665 Downey Street, where the solar panels or half the panels are on 665. They should all be on 675. Over the summer, I've been reaching out to the solar company, Sunrun, trying to get it resolved. First contact, we understand the issue, we'll get it resolved. Months going back and forth, they just stopped replying to me. Then end of September, the owner of the panels got an answer from the solar company. They said, the city approved our application. We're not going to touch these unless the owner pays for them. First week of October, I reached out to code enforcement. They said it's not a code enforcement issue. Came down to speak with, I don't want to get in trouble, I just want to help resolve. Spoke with the chief building office official. He said, yep, he's been going back and forth with the company. They knew about the issue. They're going to get it resolved. I told him, this company told us that they submitted the application, the city approved it. He informed us they submitted the application incorrectly, that we'll get it resolved. I've driven up here twice in October, trying to, you know, get an answer. Haven't been able to get him in his office. Sent emails, I have left voice messages. I am not getting a reply. The neighboring property, we were able to close it, but the lender and the title company put conditions on the sale. This needs to be resolved. And I'm tied to this because I can't just walk away because it's conditions of the sale that this needs to be resolved, and I can't get an answer.
Boy, there's a lot of moving parts to that.
Yeah.
Do we have a direction for this?
We do. So Doug Libby's here in the office, and he is the Deputy Development Services Director that oversees code enforcement and building. And so Doug can get your information and follow up with you. I'm looking at on Google Maps, and I see where the panels are. It looks like it's a duplex.
Yeah, they should be on one side, they're right in the middle.
Right. So Doug will follow up with you to get your information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on consent calendar items nine through 27? Any public comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
Our city attorney, Mike, is wanting to say something.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Kirsten. One thing I noticed from the agenda was that there's a matter for the approval of the agenda, and I don't believe that's been voted on yet. I think before we get to the action items, that would be appropriate to vote to approve the agenda and then move to the actual matter.
You approved the agenda.
What?
Approved the agenda. So early on, at the beginning of the agenda, you're going to approve the agenda? And so we passed by that.
We did?
I moved to approve the agenda.
Okay. Can you at least, I'm sorry, city manager, which one? Okay, I'm missing something.
Yeah, it says agenda modification, approval of the agenda.
Oh, okay. All right. So I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, city attorney.
You're welcome.
Okay, moving right along to consent calendar. I'll bring the, that back to council for action.
The mayor moved to approve consent calendar items nine through 27.
I've got a motion from the vice mayor.
Second.
A second from council member Piscuali. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries unanimously. business item number 28. Public hearing number one for updating city council member district boundaries for annexed property, and this is presented by our city manager, Diana Langley.
All right, thank you. So Sierra is pulling up the presentation. In the meantime, I just want to note, I think maybe we have a youth commissioner here. And so, and we did pass that on the consent calendar, and we're very thankful for you coming tonight, but you don't need to stay any longer unless you would like to. So, but thank you, thank you for being part of our youth commission.
You're welcome.
You did a good job, by the way. A good job. I'll say that in front of your parents. All right.
All right, thank you. So the item tonight is public hearing number one for updating of the city council member district boundaries for annexed property. So February of 2022, city council adopted an ordinance to establish a district-based system of elections for members of the city council. We went from a general election to the five districts that we currently have in place today. As part of that process, in the 2022 election, we had three districts convert over to district-based council members, and then with the 2024 election, districts four and five will transition. So since the adoption of the current boundary maps, there have been significant annexations adjacent to council districts four and five. So here's a map showing all of Yuba City. The districts show up in the various colors, so districts one through five. The annexed areas, you have a large area to the west of District Four that's bounded by Lincoln Road, George Washington Boulevard, and Boge Road. And then you have Boge Stewart Master Plan, which is between District Four and Five, physically connects to District Five in terms of city limit. There's a little break here in the connection to District Four. And so the process to annex in areas into council districts is that city council would typically choose where the district lines would be drawn every 10 years as part of the census project, product. There's an exception to this. As new territory has been annexed into the city and the total annexed territory contains less than 20% of the city's population, the city council is required to add the new territory to the nearest existing council district without changing the boundaries of the other council district. So what does that mean? Is that you added into the adjacent areas without changing any of these other district So procedural requirements, the public will have the opportunity to draw and submit district maps for council's consideration, and the city may develop its own maps. The city must hold at least four public hearings that enable community members to provide input on the drawing of district maps. So the, the item before you tonight is not for council to provide input as to the maps. It's really just to get public comment as to how the maps should be redrawn. You'll see that we have a long list of public hearings ahead of us. So tonight is the first of four public hearings, and we have December 19th, January 16th, 2024, February 6th. And then in February 20th, 2024, we'll introduce an ordinance, and then March 5th, final adoption of the ordinance so that we can have the revised boundaries. The mandatory criteria are that any annexed property must be added to the nearest existing council district, and no other changes to existing council districts can occur. So with that, you've received a report related to the procedures to modify the boundaries, and we now need to conduct a public hearing to receive public input on the district boundaries.
Okay, thank you for that. Public hearing number one for the updating of city council member district boundaries for annexed property is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. We do have a speaker card from Mr. Manny Cordoza.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Manny Cordoza, Crestmont Court, Yuba City. I wanted to mention about the District Five and Four boundaries that they're proposing. And back when Vice Mayor Harris and I were brought in in 2016, we passed a few ordinance changes. It wasn't, you know, we didn't have to worry about the boundaries and stuff like this for voting, but we approved annexations and, you know, this is bare land out there. There's very, you know, it's very minimal housing out in that area, and we are now, you know, developing this land eight years later. So the suggestion I would like to propose, and I guess I got to draw it on a map and make it next time, I didn't read it all the way, I apologize, is using 99 as the barrier. So District Five would go up to 99 and then put the other side of 99 into District Four. And then there's only going to be two elections within the next 10 years that we, because you can change it every 10 years. And like I said, it's, it's very, not much housing out there. It's all, like I said, farmland, orchards. And then, so it'd be 24 would be an election, and 28 would be election, and you can change it before the 32 election if housing, or if housing gets gigantic in the next 10 years. But it's, it, you know, we approve things and then they sit there, and I was just trying to make it easier for folks like me and someone else besides me, and also you, mayor. It'd be easier, instead of jumping back and forth across the highway, using the highway as a border. And that's the only, that's what I'd just like to suggest. And evidently, I'll have the map made up for you guys for the next presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments from the public on this item? Hearing, no. I'm now closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to council. And there's no action.
Yeah, there's no action. So thank you for holding the public hearing. The public can provide any feedback and comments and submit their own map recommendations. And then when we come back on December 19th, we'll have a proposal for a new map boundary.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Moving along, number 29. Laboratory fee schedule update. This is presented by Phil Marler, Deputy Director, Public Works Utilities. The floor is yours, sir.
The item I bring before you tonight is laboratory fee schedule update. Just want to start off with a couple pictures of our facility. Of course, it's the front of the laboratory, and then this is inside the lab with one of our laboratory analysts. So the laboratory conducts internal and external, or provides internal and external services. Internal services would be mainly for the water and wastewater treatment plants, where they conduct, or they test, run tests for laboratory, laboratory requirements, regulatory requirements, operational monitoring, and then sampling analysis. And some of the external services we provide will be for residential well customers, well gilling companies, private water systems, and like other public agencies like Wheatland, Livoke, and Calusa. The lab also completed over 22,500 tests for our customers last fiscal year. So we have a very unique laboratory because it's the only ELAB-certified lab in the Yuba Sutter area. The last fee updates were in 2010, and they should be updated because we need to add or remove some tests that we provide. We also have new laboratory techniques and equipment, and also because we have some anticipated economic fluctuations. So when determining the lab fee schedule, public works staff focused on recovering of costs or services and ensuring that the lab fees were fair and equitable to all. So here is the recommended fee schedule, and then you'll see in the middle column here is what the proposed fees are. The fiscal impact would be roughly $30,000 to $50,000 increase from the current fee schedule proportionally from commercial customers and the water and wastewater treatment plant operating budgets. Implementation would be from customer outreach by the laboratory department up to the end of the year, and then fee charges would begin in the beginning of this calendar year. Test fees are included in the water and wastewater fiscal year 2425 budget transfer calculations, and then the February CPI will be applied to the fee schedule each fiscal year. So recommendation is to adopt a resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges for the city services to update the fees for laboratory services for fiscal year 2324. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for that presentation. Council, any questions?
I do, Mayor. There was no CPI on there before, 2010, to move us forward.
We haven't been charging CPI since 2010.
We've got that covered now. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, I'm bringing it back to council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Move that we adopt a resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges for city services to update the fees for laboratory services for fiscal year 2324.
Got a motion from council member Boomgarden and a second from council member Piscuali.
Any public comment on this?
Oh, I apologize. Oh, wow, man, I'm slipping. Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. I will bring it back to council for action. I had a motion from council member Boomgarden and a second from council member Piscuali. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Thank you for that presentation, sir.
And I want to say thank you to Emilio for being here on his birthday.
Hey!
Thank you, Emilio.
Happy birthday.
Are we going to sing? Tell your folks we said hi. Okay, looks like we're down to number 30. 2024 city council meeting calendar. This is presented by our city clerk, Sierra Wakefield. The floor is yours.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to discuss with you the 2024 city council meeting calendar. For the most part, the recommendation is business as usual. City council meetings, as you know, are traditionally held on the first and third Tuesdays of every month at 6:00 PM. There are a few exceptions, and I'd like to go over what my recommendations are for 2024 now. So recommended changes for 2024, cancel July, I'm sorry, January 2nd because of the New Year holiday that week. Cancel August 6th, which is the first Tuesday in August, and typically you all are out in the community for National Night Out. I suggest that we add December 10th as a special meeting to announce the election results because of the way the elections are handled now with mail-in ballots. The county does need some additional time to, to count them, and we're probably most likely not going to be able to do our changing of the guard as we normally do on the first Tuesday. So I'm recommending that we add an additional meeting there on the 10th, and then adding our annual budget workshop the last Tuesday in May, which is May 28th. Other considerations, and I'm looking for your guidance on this. April 16th meeting does fall during the time of the CAP-to-CAP conference, and so if you feel that there is going to be an issue with us potentially not having a quorum because you guys are all going to be at the CAP-to-CAP training or conference, then we may need to consider canceling that meeting as well, or potentially scheduling a different, a different date for that meeting to be held. So my recommendation is to approve the changes as noted above and to provide direction for the April 16th meeting.
Thank you for that presentation. Do we have any discussion with council on this?
I would, I'll
I would obviously approve your recommendations. But as far as guidance around April 16th, I believe it's too early to tell. We'd have to wait and see on that, in my opinion. I believe.
I echo that.
Okay. Yes, I mean, I would agree with what's just, what's just been stated. It's a little bit early to look at the 16th of April. But I appreciate the heads up on that. So having said that, I'll bring this item back to council for action. Got a motion from the Vice Mayor? Excuse me. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Do we have any comment, public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Okay. Having said that, we've got a motion from the Vice Mayor.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Pasquale. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you, Sierra Okay. Future agenda items, number 31. This is the opportunity to discuss with City Manager about items that came up in this meeting that, this evening, that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none. Reports of communications.
Mayor?
Yes.
Future item. The property that is on the north side of the new Bridge Street completion at Dirt. I think we ought to start discussing what possibly could go on with that. It's, I could see it's just going to be a muddy mess. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna be an issue. So, if we could.
All right. Any else? Reports of communications. The following reports and communication items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on these items under the section unless council agrees to it, to include it in a subsequent agenda. Number 32, City Manager's Report.
All right, thank you. So we don't have a council meeting on November 21st. November 28th at 10:00 a.m., we are doing a ribbon cutting for the Bridge Street widening project. The December 5th council meeting will be the mayor vice mayor rotation, so we won't have a lot of agenda items. Development Services will be issuing a call for artists to get concepts for new city entrance signs using the existing entrance spaces. And then we're excited that we are bringing back the Holiday Truck Parade, December 13th through 17th. It'll travel through each of the council districts, and this is really being planned by staff. And so it's exciting to see the level of excitement around the Holiday Truck Parade. So thank you.
Thank you. Number 33, City Council Reports. This evening, we will begin with Councilmember Boomgarden.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank the staff and the city council for acknowledging Chief Burke on his 100th birthday 44 years ago. Through an interview process that had Chief Burke, I began my experience with the city of Yuba City. And I probably wouldn't be sitting here today if, if I hadn't not only had the opportunity to interview, but learned from him, not only as a firefighter, but as a mentor when I was the chief. And I would state that when your head hits the pillow tonight, to the citizens and anybody else that's listening, know that Yuba City Fire Department and its professional staff are the legacy left by, by William Burke. He really was the person that brought Yuba City Fire from, from a good fire department to a very professional. And his, his efforts continue to live on. Things that I was involved with over the last couple of weeks, met with the new government liaison with the Hard Rock. They reached out and just wanted to, you know, continue to establish relationships with the city of Yuba City. I thought that was quite generous and also meaningful for them. Participated in the revenue ad hoc meetings, not only with the county, but as far as our citizen ad hoc committee, too. And we do have another meeting tomorrow. Attended Regional Housing Authority meeting. Basically, we took the audit for the RHA. They're doing well. That was the highlight of that meeting. Went to the Children's and Families Commission, same thing. Michelle Blake gave an update. And that's really a going concern. They're doing a lot with that zero to five-year-old segment of our community. Participated in the Yuba Sutter Shines. I was at the Senior Center spreading tan bark. This was an effort that I think the Blue Zones in Saylove, and there was a couple Quanis Clubs as well, we're all part of. You know, one thing our community does is when they can easily get marshaled up and come together to do good things. And that was another one of those. I do want to, because there's, this is a response to the folks that have talked to me about the Seek Parade. As people probably know, it's, it does happen in District Two. And this year, it appears that they had quite an increase in, in attendance. I was there Friday and Sunday. And to the neighborhoods that surround, that are city neighborhoods that surround the temple, please note that we are very aware of the concerns that you have voiced, and we will be continuing to take those. And, and we'll begin to, you know, sort through what was not expected as far as an influx of folks. We're very aware of the, the challenges, the problems that occurred because of that. And we will, as a city, begin to address those so that we can do our part to keep those from happening in the future. That, that event, obviously, is, is important to our community. And I'm certainly not here to throw any shade on it, but it does have an impact, not only on our residents, but on our commercial businesses as well. I spoke with a business owner today. The parking lot of his business was impacted in such a fashion that he could basically not do business. So we, I mean, we have to come up with some solutions. And we will be working with our partners at the temple, I'm sure, to try to come up to a resolution. And then, I'm not sure, Mayor, if you're going to touch on this, and if you will, but Supervisor Solinger, okay, I'll let, I'll leave that for you. Thanks.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Boomgarden. Next is Vice Mayor Harris.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Going to be some overlap. As we alluded to a little bit earlier today, we participated and finished up some of the Youth Commission interviews. And true to form, these folks are very impressive. And you want to bend over backwards to help them because it's so refreshing to see some of their attitudes and their perspectives and their, their drive and their motivation. But, so that was interesting. It's, it's the most difficult one, in my opinion. As Councilmember Boomgarden mentioned, we met with staff out at Hard Rock Casino. It was a very good launch, very good meeting. I think beneficial for everybody. And basically, he's just doing his job, trying to, trying to establish and maintain relationships, which we already have a good one with them. So that was appreciated and very productive. The Business Connection Breakfast was out at Harwalk. We got to meet the Commander Beal Air Force Base and some of his staff. And took the liberty of expressing our desire to support and celebrate those folks and Beal Air Force Base personnel and families whenever possible. There is a Tri-County Diversity Event at San Brandon Park. I stopped by there for a few minutes, and they had increased attendance over last year, I was told. And did the, the monthly interview at 93Q Radio, which was nice. It's always a good time to, to tout the city and everything going on. So I appreciate that opportunity, Mr. Mayor. It was a nice chat with John Black. And as also mentioned by Councilmember Boomgarden, the Revenue Major Ad hoc Committee meetings are continuing and will continue tomorrow morning. Yuba Sutter Arts continues to do some good work. I highly encourage anybody to go to their website and take, take your pick on what they have going on because of the, a lot of variety, and it's getting better and better all the time. Straight up professional in some cases, in my opinion. They do, they do a really good job enhancing the cultural opportunities in the community. Senior Resource Fair over there at the Senior Center was very good. I'd be able to stop by there for a few minutes. And not surprising, it was very crowded impact and, and busy and very helpful to a lot of people. So it was nice and very well done for, for those folks over there. Attended several events related to the Seek Parade, has already been alluded to. There are some follow-up meetings that are going to happen. And I don't have a date for some of those yet, but there's definitely some questions and some opportunities for discussion to try to make it even better. The, let's see, SECO continues to do a lot of work. The last couple meetings we've had, I'm on the Race Equity Inclusion Working Group. The meeting that we last had was basically, as we move forward, to spread the word, the efforts of various community-based organizations. We want to come to a common ground and understand what we felt the definition of meaningful communication is. And so what we, how, how do we recognize it? And how do we do that when we take it externally to the organization and try to get some work done for that effort? The triple bottom line of equity environment and economy, I think, is very smart to do that. It encompasses a lot of things that are important as we formulate policies for, for SECOG. And also, the very complicated and complex greenhouse gas emissions discussion is continuing. So we're trying to reduce as much as we can. We are concerned we might not be able to meet it. But there are, there was, staff pointed out some benefits, collateral benefits. And it's not just lowering the greenhouse gas, but we also get some folks out of their cars and improving some, some health issues as well. Not only greenhouse gas related. Had a Film Commission meeting today, and my machine here will not connect to the internet. I took a picture of the slide. But I do know that they presented some very good numbers to us, $150,000 that they were able to track despite the, despite the strike down in Hollywood and LA. They were able to pinpoint $150,000 that came into our community that otherwise would not have by virtue of efforts of the, of the Film Commission, including restaurants and taxes, hotel rooms, the list goes on. And there's also some, and, you know, it's, it's really strange. You get in this jungle and they don't like to, everything's got to be a secret, right? So, but apparently, there's three, among, among short films and documentaries and independent things. In addition, there is three, what they termed feature films, that are going to be filmed here locally. And all we were told is some recognizable names. So more to follow on that. So that is it. It's been busy a couple of weeks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Waffle Wendy, Wednesday was a big success once again. I went to the Senior Resources Fair and sat in the booth for a couple hours. And that was very enlightening. People were really interested in what was going on in Yuba City. And the YC 311 was a huge hit. Chief and Ben were explaining it beautifully. And a lot of people that weren't even Yuba City were going, oh, yeah, that, yeah, it's great. Well, you're, I live in Live Oak. So anyway, that was kind of, that was kind of comical. Went to the Business Connection out at the Hard Rock Beal. It was nice seeing and meeting those gentlemen. I had met earlier in the, one major, I forget his name, that was in charge of all of the acquisitions and the such in, in a previous meeting. But it was nice meeting the commander. Went to Air Quality Control Board meeting today for grant presentations, trying to make our air better and removing greenhouse gases in our, in our environment. So there is money being used. There was a, once again, there's always a bigger ask than there is resources. It was half. So a lot of good things going on there. Very eclectic group that they were, even the plazium with the kids is, are getting some money to kind of push them forward as they, they start growing up and knowing the importance of, of being resourceful. Attended the, I guess it's the North Valley Water Res, Over in Willows. What is that, Wade? It's a long acronym.
It's a long acronym. Yep.
Anyway, they had a presentation about groundwater and how they monitor the, the input or, and the use of water. But it was all based in Southern Califor, or Southern, what, south of us, Fresno and Kern. And I was like, what's the relevance of this? But I sat through it. They are getting, our groundwater replenishing is moving on, not what they expected it to be. But they kind of gave a geological explanation of why that's so because of the, the, anyway, it was a bunch of science stuff that I almost went to sleep, but that's okay. But it is replenishing, which is good. And with that, I will complete my report.
Thank you, sir. Very well stated. Yeah, a little bit, yeah. So lots of things. You know, I'll start with, it was, it was an honor tonight to participate in Yuba City becoming a Purple Heart, designated as Purple Heart City, and, and what it meant to the individuals that were in attendance. So that was, and the fact that we're coming up on Veterans Day, it was just, it was really neat to attend. Just a little bit clarification with, with the City Manager, the, the ribbon cutting on Bridge Street is going to be the 28th at 10. And there's to, to be announced on the actual location on that? Is that correct?
Correct. We're going to be closing one of the side streets to do it there.
All right. Thank you for that. The Vice Mayor and I attended, as I think he said, the Youth Commission interviews. We had a lot of, of really qualified folks. And it was hard to make this, it was hard to make that decision, but we, we went through it best we could. It was exciting to see the interest of young people in our community. Transit moves, is still moving forward with making sure that they're going to be compliant with electric buses by 2035 by going after grants to their, their new location in Linda. Attended the, the Business Connection Breakfast with, at Hard Rock about Beal Air Force Base. They, they really emphasized the, the new stuff coming to Beal. But more recently, as many of you know, the decision to retire the U2 is, is, is official. So it's going to be interesting to see what that, how that translates to the community and the region. Attended the GAC with our presenter, Johnny Burke. The Senior Resource Fair, nice job with the, the fair. I got to tell you, it's almost like you, you folks need a bigger facility to do that because it was wall to wall. I had to park and walk. What's that?
Easy time.
I had the, you know, yeah, I had to park and walk. I was amazed at the turnout and the level of engagement. People were asking questions and just excited. And, and just to know that we're, we're, we're few communities that offers that service is just, is really nice. I did attend the Commission of Mayors, which was hosted by Mayor Steinberg down in Sacramento. There were other mayor, other mayors from the region. And we all discussed our common challenges. And a lot of times, it seemed like revenue came up. And so it's nice to know that we're not the only one in that boat. And so more to come with that. Before I end the meeting, though, I would like to give Councilmember Pasquale a moment to say something.
Thank you, Mayor. This past two months, we had a very tragic accident in our community for a family that's been entrenched in this community, the Dana family. Dana and Dana has been a fixture on Bridge Street and Cooper for, since 1941. The family lost their, Steve and Kelly Dana, lost their son, Sam Dana. Sammy was part of our school. I remember him as a little boy. He was all, tricycle, he'd, he'd run the wheels off of tricycle. And unfortunately, that adventurous, hard-pushing little boy created a tragedy. He just couldn't help, he couldn't help himself. He was Sam Dana all the way. He was full of life. Every, the, the community, the, it's very few times that I have seen the main building at the fairgrounds full. And it was full, literally. Our community building at the fairgrounds full, and it was full, literally. Our community stepped up, and I am very proud of that, that we are a community that we are, and we have the compassion that we have here. And so tonight, thank you for indulging me, and I would like to close the meeting in memory of little Sam.
Thank you, Councilmember Pasquale for that. That's appreciated. And I also would like to mention that we also recently lost another member of our community recently, Ron Solinger, who many of you know, was a two-time county supervisor in District 3 out in Sutter. His accomplishments, for those of you that read the obituary in the paper, goes on and on and on. But at the, at the end of the day, this gentleman was a true public servant. I believe they have a celebration of life November 19th?
On the day of celebration.
Yes, and it's, I believe it's November 19th at Peachtree Golf Course. And so in addition to Samuel Dana, I'd like to close the meeting in honor of former supervisor Ron Solinger.